Could we go? All right, call the meeting to order. Let's look at the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call please.
Trustee Malinsky, here. Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Garrett.
Here.
Mayor McFatrich.
Here.
We have several sets of minutes to approve. A motion to approve minutes of May 9th, please. So moved. And a second.
Second.
Any corrections?
March 9th, you mean?
Did I say March?
You said May.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's what I was looking for.
Oh, I know which one she meant.
May 9th, yes. Any corrections on the March 9th minutes?
No.
All in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. A motion to approve minutes for March 20th.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any corrections?
Hold on, let's pull it back up. No, no, there's a correction, that's why. Not that one.
No. Everyone good with that one?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes for April 6th.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any corrections? Is that the one Amy?
Yeah, the steward's grant was said 500, it's 650.
I found it after.
All right, so we'll note that that's 650. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And finally, minutes of the April 28th special board meeting. The motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any corrections on that meeting?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Presentation of petition, miscommunications and general questioning period for members of the community. Seeing as I see no one here, we'll move right on. Report from the codes enforcement officer. He was planning on coming tonight. So I guess we'll just move on and then come back to that. My report.
Well, he did present a report.
He did, but he told me he's coming.
Was it printed? Because I didn't get a copy of it in email. Um.
That was.
Yeah.
It was in his email.
Yeah.
Did I miss it? In the email? Who sent it?
I sent a whole bunch of emails.
I know, I went through them all, I didn't see his, and I thought that was odd.
Do you want to, do you want to look at mine?
Sure.
I know he specifically said he was coming. I think he really wants to talk about the burned property down in Main Street. He did send a follow-up letter. He was going to explain our, the steps.
The Oak Street property, there is garbage all along the right of the house now. Just keeps adding and adding.
Adding.
Stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, but now it's garbage bags lined up along the side. On top of all the stuff and the dilapidating stuff.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to note that, and if for some reason he doesn't come, I'll at least let him know. Okay, well, let's move on. And when he shows up, we can let him explain it, and if he doesn't, then we can go back to it. I can discuss a little bit of it. All right. It's really hard to speak through this, and I already get comments that the public has trouble hearing us.
Well, if you take that off, you're six feet away from us.
I'm six feet away from you. So I'm going to put this right here, and I'll put it on later if you feel I should, but it's really hard to talk with that. Good evening to the public and my fellow board members. It's nice to see all of you. We are all experiencing difficult and stressful times right now. I think we can all agree to that. Life as we know has changed and may remain different for months, and perhaps even years. Loss of income, lack of food, isolation from those we care about, paucity of diversions, and overall uncertainty have led us to a roller coaster of emotions ranging from sadness to anger, fear, and anxiety. As a small, tight community, we are fortunate that we can look after each other to help ease this distress. There have been so many examples of caring individuals who have reached out to offer assistance. Residents sewing hundreds of masks. A family who has donated many, many, many art supplies. People donating food and sanitizing items. Food drives organized. Residents sharing books. Families creating chalk drawings with positive messages. And rainbows and stuffed animals adorning their windows. Emergency vehicles forming a parade to lift our spirits. The Easter Bunny going house to house with books. And the following day, the Easter Bunny trotting through the village on horseback. It's imperative that we remember to thank those who continue to work so all of us have the essential service, services. Healthcare professionals and support staff. Direct support at care facilities and nursing homes. Grocery store employees. Sanitation workers. Takeout food service employees. And other many, many small businesses. To all the parents and caregivers who have taken on the task of homeschooling, I say job well done. I know how difficult that must be. To the teachers who are devastated to be out of the classroom. Thank you for your courage and your creativity in developing online lessons. And finally, to the Village of Champlain employees. You have remained steadfast and hardworking even under these reduced staff circumstances. I am always honored to be part of such a committed team. There have been so many folks who demonstrate motivation and determination every day. I see you. I bear witness to your dedication in continuing to supply us with necessary items and to demonstrate strength in the face of adversity. It's too early to know how this pandemic will directly affect the Village of Champlain. There will definitely be financial consequences. We are already preparing for a shortfall due to low sales tax revenues. It's also quite likely that we will not be able to safely organize large gatherings like concerts and festivals. These decisions will be made in the following weeks. I ask each of you to take care of yourselves. Eat healthy. Exercise. Step away from social media. Get plenty of sleep. Connect with each other through phone calls or from yard to yard. Focus on what you can control. Wash your hands, wear a mask when in close contact, and avoid crowds. Make a plan to check on those who are alone with a daily phone call. We are all in this together. The Village of Champlain is resilient and compassionate. Together, we will care for ourselves and each other as we continue to move forward. Thank you. Report from the trustees. Amy?
So I apply for two more grants to add to the downtown playground area. And we'll wait and see. So that one was for $5,000, and the other one was for like $3,800 and some odd dollars. So that would cover three pieces of equipment, which would be great if we get those. So we'll wait and see. I'm looking for others. I'm not finding too many new ones. A lot of things have been put on hold or put off. So it is kind of a different, different world. One day at a time. I know, also you put everything perfectly, Janet, thank you for that. A lot of people are suffering. There is, you know, a lot of changes, especially as you know, I work in the nursing homes. And a new regulation came out yesterday, thank God. Every single staff member must be tested twice a week. So it's a relief to them as well to know, am I carrying this? Am I infecting everyone? And no longer are the facilities required to take COVID-positive residents. Amen. Thank the Lord. We remain still COVID-free in Clinton, Essex, and Franklin County. And all of our facilities, regardless of what you've seen in the mail, in the news. Everyone is still negative. And in and of that, of itself, the dedication of the staff every day going, not knowing what they're facing, life or death, not being with their families or their loved ones. Many of our directors of nursing aren't even going home to their families. So it is very devastating, and they continue to go, and they continue to be there for the residents. Under some very dire situations, the staffings are becoming extremely critical because no one is allowed in the facility with a sniffle. So the everyday person with allergies and whatnot aren't allowed in, so staffing is becoming very critical. So for all of you who have loved ones in facilities, really important to be reaching out, to be calling. If you see anything, you call the ombudsman. You get help, because we need to continue to fight poor residents who don't have a voice. I know it's a total sidebar from the village, but it's very, very important. That's it for me.
Thanks, Amy.
That's very important, I agree.
Kim?
The only thing that I have is, so as, as everyone knows, the kayak launch itself was delivered a while ago. The docking, the dock curving, and the accessories that go along with that was delivered, I believe, last week.
Curving's on backorder, okay.
Oh, the curving's on backorder, okay. And it is now with Modern Mechanical working on the decking, so.
For the gangway.
For the gangway. Confused on all of these. So Tom's been in contact with him quite regularly, talking about what we need, and things got changed up a little bit for what John was already designing as to what they said they were going to be delivering. But John said not to worry, he would make adjustments on what he had already done. So hopefully, we should have that in a month or so.
Or less, I guess it depends on when we get it sent out. He's starting on it.
Okay.
You know, the design stage has got to be tweaked a little bit, so it's going to probably put a week's delay. And then he'll start, he'll start building.
Okay.
And to give you the detail of that, it's because the decking that we chose, we chose to purchase the same decking for the gangway as the docks. And that decking required a 16-inch on-center application.
Okay.
John had prepared for a 24-inch based on originally looking at O'No. So we went back and forth for a week trying to find different decking that would, that would meet. And finally, Johnson knew that this is not worth the hassle, so he's making changes.
Yeah, he said he'd make it work.
Okay.
So hopefully, in the next month or so, we'll get that installed. I'm thinking the way, the situation, the way the world is right now, it's not at the top of the priority list because people are not going to be able to, you know, to gather, to, to go out in groups and stuff, so.
You know, but it would be handy for people that want to use that recreation.
Yeah, but luckily, kayaks are pretty single, so.
This is true.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so you could, they could use it. Can I ask, did you get ahold of Matt Cooper? Because that's kind of like our next step.
Yeah, I know it is, and I did try to reach him, and I did not. He emailed me about something else, but did not answer the question about the concrete, about the engineering aspect of that situation.
So I'm wondering if we should just go out looking. You still say you're too busy to do that, right?
You're going to, I mean, it's going to be engineered, there's nothing that I can, I mean, somebody's going to need, you need forms, you need stuff we don't have.
Right, as far as the engineering, I don't feel it needs to be done by an engineering firm. It just, John and I talked about it, it probably should be done by somebody that's more knowledgeable than me. I mean, I can engineer it, I'll probably be, probably be okay. More than likely, it'd be too strong, but he, if, if we should, maybe we should just go out and reach out to contractors to get some estimates on what this would be, and get their take on what they think the size needs to be. You know, I can do that, I could contact two or three of them. Because I don't think we're ever going to get this done if we keep waiting for an engineering firm to give us a helping hand.
Yeah.
I agree.
And I'm sure that, you know, I'm sure that whole firm is working, you know, working at home, and it's probably not going very smoothly.
Exactly. Can you at least do the digging for us?
I can do the digging, we just need to know.
Yeah, well, once we figure that out. I mean, I have, I have an idea, it needs to go down deep enough so Frost doesn't tip this thing, and next year, we have a gangway that's on site. You know, that's, that's the major thing. I don't think we're looking at a whole lot of forms.
Do you have any forms, you know, regular concrete forms, that we don't have?
Nope, I realize that. That's why I think we need to look for some people to assist us with this.
So you don't mind getting some, looking into some bids?
Nope, I'll, I'll see if I can get two or three at least.
Okay.
And one more thing. John Trombley had emailed me one day and said he was cleaning down his garage, and he had an aluminum kayak, kayak rack. Would we like it? So I said yes, and I believe I've seen it down next to the tall kayak rack. So he must have dropped it off, so.
Oh, I did see that.
I didn't know, I didn't.
If I didn't know whose it was. That's from, that's from John Trombley.
Yeah, I just saw it.
He asked if we'd like it. He said, I found it in the garage, not using it, would you like, yes, we would love it, so.
Sure.
So that was from John.
So my question is that is.
You've seen it.
I saw it, I didn't, I didn't know who dropped it.
It requires to be bolted down to a, to a stationary platform of some sort. So do we want to incorporate that into this concrete work we're doing and have that rack off to the side? Or do we want to just make a wooden skid type thing to put it on?
I would see, probably, because if we get ice, it comes up. What we have there now, we can pull out with a loader. Trouble is, they left kayaks on it all winter, they didn't take them off. They obviously didn't care.
Luckily, luckily, we didn't have ice up there.
But we have it on that one, so we can pick it up at a loader if something happens. At least we can move the whole thing, you know?
So we could put, I think we could put this like on a couple of four by, not four by fours, six by sixes probably, and it'd be stationary.
I didn't really look at it close, but I said, I said, somebody, I didn't know who dropped it off.
Yeah, that's what it was.
I didn't either, I couldn't figure it out either.
I happened to go down there the other day when, when people were delivering, but it was too late by the time I got back from doing my bus run for lunches. And I happened to see it down there, and I'm like, oh, and I forgot to send him an email thanking him. I do have one other question for you, Mayor. I know we had spoke probably two months ago regarding reaching out and seeing if organizations would come in and set up like on weekends or something like that for, for renting kayaks. Had you heard anything back from the insurance company? Okay.
It can be done, insurance-wise. They, they have to show that they're carrying very, very heavy liability. I don't know what it was, a million dollars or more, so there was a certain sum.
Usually, the basic is a million.
And, and then it can be done as long as they can show that.
And the onus would be all on them if something were to happen?
Yes, and they would, they would call us a co-insured or co-listed, or whatever the right terminology is for that. So yes, that can be done, insurance-wise. Now I've got concerns about gathering. And if you have a rental business, are you going to be pulling a lot of people in there? They're going to be gathering, and is that going to cause different problems related to this virus? So.
And some of the other things that I found, I found probably a dozen different places around, but none of them are close.
Right.
Like Lake Placid might have been one of the closest ones, Saranac Lake. And then you get over into Vermont. And I'm just wondering, especially now with all of this going on, is anybody even going to be interested in coming here to do that? That might be something for another season.
That's how I'm feeling.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not, I, right now, I'm not feeling that it's worth the effort to reach out to all these people and say, hey, you know, we've just got this new launch, blah, blah, blah. I just don't see it happening this year.
There's so many question marks, I, I I think we need to wait a year.
Yeah, good, okay, then I'm not going to pursue anything further on that.
Thanks for what you did, though. I really appreciate all that work.
No problem. And thanks for checking with the insurance company.
Yeah, that's all. Tom?
Okay, well, I'll go to that report with Kim while you're docking. I want to take this opportunity to thank any of you here in the community. All the donors that came to the blood drive I held on April 20th. It was done at the EMS station number one here on Route 11. It was very successful, we had a total of 37 donors that came through that day. It was done very nicely, and, you know, kind of like this, we were apart outside and we were called in two at a time. And we had 32 successful units donated.
That's excellent.
That was awesome. So thank you to the community for, for coming out. I had a lot of new donors that, that came out that were there for the cause. It was awesome. And as far as the KFC virtual food drive, I want to report that to date, we have raised $5,200.
Oh my gosh, that's fabulous.
So thank you to all the donors. Many of you probably here, et cetera. Thank you to all that donated. And the GoFundMe site is still open to anyone who hasn't donated and would care to, so please do. I'm going to leave it open for a few more weeks, it's kind of leveled off, but.
You never know.
You never know, we'll, we'll see what happens. I mean, I had a large donation come in a week ago, as a blue, so. You don't know.
That's great.
So that's, that's gone very well. So thank you to everybody.
And Tom, good job on both those efforts.
Thanks.
I know you put a lot of time into that, so.
So I've got a, I have your card tomorrow, it's next door. Do it today.
Anything else?
No, that's all, thanks.
Thank you. I know you just posted a couple of new things, yeah.
You know, there's a lot of, a lot of the school community that's trying to do what we can, especially for our seniors this year. And as part of the Booster Club, we put together a video of the senior athletes who are missing the spring season. So if you get a chance, go on the Northeastern website and check out each, each level. So each elementary has a video, the middle school has a video, and high school has a video. And right now, the Booster Club video is on Facebook. So hopefully, we can see that on the website also, so you can, you know, cheer on our kids and teachers. Yes, so I just scheduled the next cooking class, which will be a live feed on Facebook on Saturday, May 30th at 1:00. Like always, I'm able to supply 20 kids with the ingredients to do the, the class. So I'll get that ahead of time, door to door, drop it out for them. I'll also put the ingredient list and the recipe on the, the event page, so whoever wants to join in at any time, can do that. And the good thing about a live feed is that it's recorded and it's on, online after the event, so it'll always be there. And I'm working on doing the amazing Champlain Challenge fun runs virtually. The health department just ran theirs the last couple of weeks for the month of April. And they had very few participants, but they did have participants, and they gave some kind of challenge each week and a distance, and so the kids would go out in their own yard or find a track or somewhere and, and do their run and send, submit their time. So it's going to be something very similar to that, and something to just get the kids outside and still do what we usually do, but, you know, distance. On their own time. So right now, that's, that's what I have.
Those are great ideas.
Have they canceled graduation, or is that still on hold?
That's still on hold, they're waiting for the announcement. Hopefully, by May 29th, we'll know more on what they can do there. I do know that they're working on many ideas, they have a couple of good ideas, they haven't shared with everyone. But they do want to do something, you know? So, yeah, that's not out of the, out of the books yet. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Mayor? I have a little thing I forgot to add.
Absolutely.
In regards to that blood drive, a big thank you to the Champlain EMS department for allowing me to hold it there. I can't believe I forgot to say that, it was in there. Without them, I couldn't have done it, so. Thank you, EMS.
Yeah. They're really great to work with.
They are.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right. So next, the report from the Club Treasure. Everyone has seen their expense and revenue reports for April. Looking like maybe our general fund is going to probably break even. It's pretty close. Our water and sewer, we are going to have some excess, but we also have to remember that we got $15,000 extra from the town this year for our ONM. And in our sewer fund, we received $65,000 back in grant money. Should we do the transfers first, one of them?
We need to do those before we do the warrant.
Right, right. Does everyone have that sheet? So you can see that.
Did you have questions?
Yeah. Did you have a question, Kim?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I just, no. So you can see that we have four transfers in the, the general account. I think, rather than doing their separate motions, if someone wants to make a motion and read each of them, we can do it in one, and take those four first.
These transfers, they're about to turn.
Transfers? Yep, so we've got four in the A.
Do you want me to read them, and then somebody can make a motion?
Yeah, we can do it that way.
Okay. Our transfers are to A1620.2, which is our building equipment. From A1989.4. Shared services, $3,500. And from A1910.4, unallocated insurance, $1,087. To A8010.1, codes officer, $70. From A8010.11 consultant, $70. To A8666.4, property maintenance, $3. From A5110.4, streets contractual, $3. To A5110.1, streets, personal services, $15,000. From A5410.4, sidewalks, $15,000.
I make a motion to approve the transfers as red?
And, a second, please. So. Any discussion or questions about these transfers?
Just, what was the building equipment reason? What did we go over in, do you remember?
I think that was the firearms system.
The firearms system.
Yeah, I pressed the firearm.
And the personal services for 15? That, when we did our budget, we, we had rearranged it so more funds were going to be through sewer because we needed to have an assistant.
Right.
Well, when we first started working on the budget, when we're doing paving and everything, none of those, none of their services were allocated to sewer. So now we have more in our sewer than we do in our streets, and I guess that's going to happen, it's not. You can't control it. Yep, I get it.
Any other questions? Go call.
Trustee Malinsky?
Aye.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor McFatrich?
Aye.
It's going to be like, who, who's going to do first?
I know, it's like, okay, which one's going to do first? Okay, the second transfer is for the G Fund, G1440.1, engineering, $2,055. Okay, the second transfer is for the G Fund, G fourteen forty point one, engineering, two thousand fifty-five dollars. From G eighty-one thirty point two, um, sewage treatment and disposal equipment, two thousand fifty-five dollars. Um, to G eighty-one ten point four, sewer administration, twelve thou- twelve hundred and seventy-five dollars. From G eighty-one thirty point two, sewage treatment disposal equipment, one thousand two hundred and seventy-five.
We have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion?
The sewer administration, what's the second one for?
Um.
The twelve seventy-five?
The twelve seventy-five.
First one's obvious for the engineering.
Yeah. It wasn't the whole two again.
We, um
Now that was the testing, chemicals and endine.
Yeah, it's a point four account, so it's got our electricity in it, it has our, um, endine recording in it, it has our, um, fees for, um, DEC.
Transport, transporter permit.
Yeah, the transporter permit was seven hundred dollars, too. It's, and, and the chemicals, 'cause he ordered, um, sodium wally, that was sixteen hundred dollars, so, um, it's the end of the year. I'll those that out.
Yep. Any other questions? Little call, please.
Trustee Malinsky?
Aye.
Trustee Chomley?
Aye.
Trustee Chomley?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich?
Aye.
I was trying to find my. Okay, so now we've got the warrant.
Want the warrant?
And on the warrant, we have additional invoices. The additional invoices are nine thousand one hundred and twenty-five ninety-eight, for a total warrant of forty-six thousand four twenty-six twenty-eight.
Make a motion to approve? And a second, please?
Second.
Discussion, questions?
Um, I just have a question on the three charges for M- Murnane.
Oh, yeah.
Negotiations.
That is negotiations, so when we contacted the lawyer, uh, I mean, it says Murnane, but it's actually Stafford Owens, when we contacted that lawyer.
Okay.
Um, and she did that research
Okay.
and got back to us, those are those charges.
Okay, I was just confused, because it had Murnane's name on there and not her name?
I know, yeah, right.
Okay, I just, I'm like, oh, do we have any player?
No, 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 that's a, that's a good question, though, so technically, it would be the firm.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions? Little call, please.
Trustee Malinsky?
Oh, did you have a question, Nikki? Oh, I'm sorry.
Trustee Malinsky?
Aye.
Trustee Chomley?
Aye.
Trustee Chomley?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich?
Aye.
All right, moving right along here. Report for the superintendent.
Well, it's, uh, definitely been a challenge here the last little bit. Difficult thing for us with the reduced staff, was going from three people on the streets to one person on the streets, which really slowed things down, but we learned how to adjust and did what we had to do to keep everything running. Spring brush pickup was completed, um, streets have been swept. We did a bunch of maintenance work on equipment, we still have some more to do. Uh, mowing is underway. Right now, we're working on, uh, ditches and cleaning culverts, um, which will, will continue. Um, I did meet with Carl la- uh, last Friday, and it looks like we're still on schedule, that he will still do paving this year, so for a while, we weren't sure if they were gonna get any asphalt put down, so we're gonna keep, uh, keep getting things ready, so we can be prepared when paving time comes. We're gonna have to do hydrant flushing, but I'm gonna wait, um, right now, I've got two guys in the streets. Starting in June, hopefully, we'll have everybody back, so we'll have three people on the streets, so I'm gonna wait in case we have any issues, uh, when we do our flushing. It won't be until sometime in June, we're gonna, uh, get our hydrant flushing done, that's gonna take probably three weeks. Other than that, it's gonna be, this summer's gonna be mostly, you know, we've got a bunch of essential work to complete. Maintenance on equipment, cutting shoulders, ditching, cleaning culverts, installing drainage. We got some DIs, catch basins to repair, paving and patching, sidewalk and curb replacements, uh, we gotta get some topsoil screened. I've got some stuff at the water plant, um, I gotta put up a retaining wall. Small retaining wall, and we gotta move our conduit for, um, our generator. I'm still working on that right now, on the generator quotes, I got a quote in, and I spoke with a gentleman about the quote, I thought it was on the high side. Um, but, what he's explaining to me, that one of the other quotes I had got for the electrical, uh, it's like, the quote they gave me for the electrical part is half with the material costs. So there's something not right there, I, I'm hoping this week I'll have that strained out. But we have to move, um, where the generator is, I mean, our generator now is like eight foot long, the, the size of the new generator is like over fifteen feet long. So I have to, I have to put retaining wall blocks and build, build up, so we can pour a new pad for the generator, 'cause otherwise, we won't be able to plow, we're gonna be out of room. So the only way to do that is we're gonna have to dig and move our conduit, and then build a wall, fill it in and, uh, and pour a new pad, so that'll be, that'll be down the road here, um, hopefully not too long, but. Uh, wastewater plant, um, starting next Monday, tentatively, we're gonna start, uh, hauling sludge out, emptying the drying beds. We still got a bunch of work at the sewer plant, we gotta empty our tanks, change our frying bubble diffusers, we got three tanks left to do. Uh, one of our walls has a crack, um, and it's leaking from one tank to the other, so we can't, uh, right now, we can only, we can only press off one side, we can't press off the other, it has to be, whole side has to be drained down, so that can be repaired. We've got an airline that's broken one of the tanks, and obviously, the same issue, we have to drain it to, to fix it. Um, and I'd like to, this, sometime this summer, I'd like to get Woody on scraping and repainting the piping, the external piping down there, um, so the paint's in pretty bad shape. So that's just some of, that's not a inclusive list, but that's some of the stuff that I've got going to get us through. Um, that's gonna take us through the summer, I mean, it's gonna be busy. On top of that, I know, I don't know
You wanna talk about the rec trail?
The rec trail. There's a bunch of spots on the rec trail, I, I don't know if anybody's been down it, but it's, they're washed out, it's, they've been washed out for a while. The only real way to fix those spots, it's gotta be ditched on the side to pull the water away. When it was put in, it should've really been taken down the sides, and that should've been put in place, so that way, we wouldn't have the issues we're having now, but it wasn't. I mean, they cut through and the banks are high in the water. So, on top, on top of that, there's a bridge that crosses the gully down towards Parket End. Well, it's all washed out, it's all washed down, collapsing under the bridge. So we did meet with the county, um, his suggestion was that we're gonna have to ditch on the sides. And underneath, it's all washed out, we gotta, there's no way to get in there, we gotta hand shovel all that, like, it's like four foot holes. Hand shovel it, put fabric and put big stone, like a foot deep.
Shot rock.
We gotta do it all by hand, carry it down, 'cause there's no way to get it underneath there. So that's, I'm looking at that, I mean, that's a three or four week pro- project, to, to be able to put a foot deep of rock after you put fabric.
Is it only on one side?
Right now, it's only on that side. So that's gonna be ditched to get the water away, then you gotta put a shot rock, so it doesn't keep washing, but that hole, under the whole bridge, from the top, where the asphalt is all the way down, it all has to be leveled, put fabric and put stone all the way down that, and it's all gonna be done by hand, there's no way to get machines or anything underneath that.
Is that only our responsibility?
That's our responsibility.
We own it.
Because we own that section.
That should've been We own all the way across.
We're past Parket, we, we even own, you know, a little bit, towards the high school.
And the other side, so, I mean, when they cut that through, the, the sides are two feet higher than the path, and that little section is paved. So all that water comes down, and it stays on the edge, and it ran right into the bridge, and we got big bales of stone and wire, and then we're all, the whole bank's sliding down, collapsing underneath.
Baskets or tips.
I mean, there, there's stone baskets that were, you know, they were
Yeah.
they're all sliding down, so that's all gonna be, and it's all gonna be done by hand. There's no way, even if we take the planking off the top, the stringers are only this far apart, you can't, there's no way to dump stone in there, it all has to be done by hand, the hole underneath it.
And there's nothing to go back on the company who did this incorrectly. Mind-blowing, the amount of money, of taxpayers' money spent on this.
So I don't know, I mean, the ditching's gonna be done to get the water away, and then that's gonna have to be shored up, 'cause if it, eventually, if it gets left, that, it's gonna have to be closed, the bridge will wash out.
Are we able to reach out to that company, see if they're willing to do anything?
Yeah, no, I mean
Well, I mean, we, we met with the county, we, he, they came up
The county's the one that had it, and he turned it, was the county that had it and turned it to us, correct?
Yeah, the county turned it over to us.
So it's our baby now.
We met with him on Friday.
I understand it, but maybe the company might be willing to do something based on the poor job that was done.
Well, I can reach out to the person we met with.
I mean, it's worth a try, right?
I don't mind writing, I don't mind contacting him. I can ask.
It's worth asking.
Fifty percent chance of asking.
But, I mean, he made it pretty clear that it was going to be our responsibility.
Yeah, he, he gave a suggestion with how to fix it.
Yeah.
We met him there, and he said, this is what you need to do, so how do you, you know?
This was the contractor that
No, no, the county, it was a design, I mean, it was, it was the counties, they did it, they hired contractor, I mean, they did it to the spec that was given to them, this is what we want done. You know, and I gotta get ahold of the landowners and make sure I can put a ditch, 'cause there's only a right of way there, there's no right of way. I mean, I gotta, I'm sure it won't be an issue, but I wanted to get ahold of the landowner, say, can I put a small sway out to get that water, and I don't think there'll be an issue, but I wanna, you know, talk to them first, before you go on, somebody's but the only way to fix it is gotta be ditched to get the water pulled away, and then, uh, all, the stone's gonna be brought, I don't even know how many yards the stone is gonna be, but it's gonna be a bunch, um, and I, like I say, underneath
Plus, you're working, you're working with a, a waterway, right?
We all
Need to be silt screened and all that good stuff?
Yeah, I mean, that stuff's already down, we're, we're putting fabric and stone on now, so, but, it's only gonna keep getting worse. As we get heavy rains, it's only gonna get worse, it's not gonna get better, even the asphalt up to the bridge is dropped, that's gonna be patched, 'cause it's, I mean, everything around it, the whole bank is sliding. So, it's, uh
So is that closed now?
No.
No, no, it's, it's usable now, but we wanted to get ahead of it before it really gets bad.
I mean, last fall, it's, it started last fall.
Yeah.
You know, there was a small sinkhole on one side and went down, we put, they brought the one ton, got in there and they put stone to fill. But what's happening is the water's following the, and it's, that stretches asphalt, that's what it speeds up too, but just from the top of hill, the, you know, when you get heavy rains, it's, it's gonna follow, it's getting no place to go, and that's, if we don't get something there to get the water away, it's just gonna keep getting worse. D- divert it. You know, same thing with the other spots, I mean, when they did that, they used stone dust, they put it in with a paper, and they had heavy rollers and put calcium. I mean, we don't have any of that, but we can put stone dust back in, but without being really compacted and, eh, something to harden it. The biggest thing is you gotta get some drainage on the sides.
You need a drainage, I agree, but as far as for compacting it, can we rent a small roller just to, to do that?
Uh
Maybe borrow one from someone.
Yeah, it's gonna be something pretty good size, I mean, they had a, the big asphalt roller that they use, you know?
I know, but even, even a, a smaller one, I guess it's up on the driveway.
But that wasn't for talking.
Me, have you been to Walk Cross here?
Not this year.
I won't get involved in this.
I got a video, I'll show you, but there's like, stretch from here to the side road. Uh, the stone is, you know, gone, you got a narrow path.
Yeah, I don't know, I saw it last year, it was in bad shape then, so I can only imagine.
It's only getting worse, yeah.
I haven't had it yet this year.
But first, we do have to draw the water away.
We're gonna have to get, do something there, it's just, I gotta try to fit it in between, you know, and when I start looking at it, we're gonna be heading into June. We got probably at least three weeks of flushing, that takes most of June, you're getting closer to July, you're getting closer to paving season. I mean, we've got like, culvers and, cross culvers and ditching to do before we can even do paving, that's the, it's the time crunch of everything.
Have we chosen a street yet?
What's that?
For the paving jobs?
Uh, I'm looking at a few of them now, that's, um, but I haven't set it in stone yet, he should be getting ahold of me shortly and say, hey, we need your list of streets, so I haven't given him anything yet. We'll see as it gets closer, we've got some that are
When we get together and talk about that.
So, that's, uh, that's all I have, I guess, for now.
Are we still operating on half-staff at a time?
No.
No, well, only, but only with Juanita and Mary, they're, they're splitting the day, but we're going back to them being both here on Monday.
We started on, a month ago.
That's what I thought.
But
But now you're talking, it sounds like that you're not
Well, we're not, because, I mean, I have one guy that takes care of water and sewer, so, I had three guys for the streets, I was down to one, now I'm not, now I'm at two, because I have one guy that's, I mean, everybody's gotta use their vacation, so he's got off till June, I mean, you got vacation right through, you can't take it away from him. So once June comes, you know, their, their vacation will be used up, and then we'll be back to, we'll be back to full capacity. Because vacations I had to cancel, I mean, early, can't let them take vacation, and you got this one off, that one off, so, I mean, they gotta be able to use their vacation. So it, it, I mean, can't really take it away from them, and if we take it away, we're gonna have to be giving it to them in June, July, and it's, there's never a good time is a problem. You know, it makes it hard, it's never a, we don't really have any downtime here. Very little shot in the spring between when the snow ends, not knowing if we're gonna have snow, you know, we get one little s- shot usually, other than that. The rest of the year is not really, we don't really have downtime.
No.
You'd think you would in between, but it just doesn't happen.
And it's a small crew.
I mean, usually, when we get done paving, it's starting into the snow season, it's like, right after, so. But we'll just keep plugging away and doing what we can, and that's really all we can, that's all we can do.
Any other questions for Mike?
No, no, I'm just disheartening, we gotta put so much time and money into that trail now.
Yeah, I know.
You guys still working from home? I got work for you guys to do if you're working from home.
Yeah, no, Mike and I talked about
I said that the other day, I said, we
Getting a board brigade and getting, uh, pass rocks, yeah, there you go.
I mean, if we, we gotta hand shovel it all underneath, but the, the closest thing I can do is, is try to bail rocks and bring them down at least. So I was talking to Jan today, I'd like to see if I could set up some kind of, uh, maybe have a big piece of culvert, and some kind of chute, where I could at least get them down close, and then we can place them, because if we gotta carry them all, I can't even, like I said, I can't even take planks off, you only got spaces this big, you, you'd bust them, you can't dump them, you gotta do it all by hand.
Could you get them close with a backhoe?
On the side, I mean, you still got, you know, from here to Amy, the width of it, then you gotta get them underneath, and it's gotta go all the way, there's some holes this deep under there. It's dirt and then nothing, and he wants me to level all that to get fabric in first, before we put stone in, so, and he said, eh, you know, it should be pretty thick, I mean, that's a lot of stones. It's, you know, the stones are probably this size, they're a blasted stone, so they got angles where they lock.
Kind of what I have at the KFC for that wall.
Yeah.
Shot rock.
Yeah, yeah, medium, you go to the medium stone.
Mm-hmm, medium shot.
So, I mean, something you're gonna shovel, it's, it all has to be done by hand, it's just getting it there, you know?
No alternative?
Not really.
I mean, 'cause, I mean, how are you gonna justify what this is gonna cost us? This is crazy.
I don't know, I mean
You work through from prison, I don't know. We used to do that, but, not so much anymore.
No, they don't, no.
They used to.
They used to.
See if I can use our community service.
Yeah.
I think there's somebody's gonna babysit, because
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but it's better to babysit that than put the crew down there and lose a crew member.
Well, it's not that, I mean, you're not, but, it's just, it's a lot of, it's a lot of
It's a lot of manual labor.
It's a lot of manual, it was a lot of time.
It's basically mostly manual labor, so. But, well, I'm gonna see what I can figure out, if I can figure out something that we can use for even to shoot to get it closer, um, do what we can, hopefully, we'll have to do the other side. But I gotta get ahold of the landowner first and, uh, the people that take care of it, I don't think there'll be an issue, but I wanna at least talk to them and explain to them what we wanna do and, um, before we
So I gotta ask, when you mentioned the other side, it has no erosion at all right now?
No, that one looks all right, because the, the land is down, and I think it runs off No, that one looks alright, because the, the land is down and I think it runs off through the grass. It was, when it was put in, it should've been ditched on the side, and it wasn't. All those spots that the banks are high, that's where your trouble is.
At some point, should we do a little ditching over there to create some swale, to make sure it stays in that spot?
Well, it's a real issue there.
Possibly.
Fix this side first.
Construction person is the engineering, I think.
Yeah.
But anyway.
And it's hard, because once it's turned over.
Anyway, it is what it is, right?
That's right, that's right.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Can't change it, just can fix it, it's really.
It's frustrating, but, yeah. Uh, correspondence, oh, I'm sorry.
I do have something else too, um.
Oh, yeah, you did want to, sorry, I didn't do that on purpose.
I've got a, the pump for our headworks. We had put a new pump in, uh, there's two pumps in the headworks building, one of them had wet. We had got the new pump, the new pump is in. When we put the new pump in, the one that was no good, we pulled it out and sent back. So I've got a quote here, it's double sided, but one side is to rebuild our pump. And the other one is, will be paid with the last pump we bought, you can see there's quite a bit of difference. We're gonna have to, eventually here, we're gonna have to change the other one, or we're both gonna do it at the same time, so, um, I think that much of you rebuilt, I think, I mean, my recommendation is being this, you know, ten grand difference. Um, my recommendation is getting it, he's got it over there, he pulled it apart, see what needed, my recommendation is getting it, um, rebuilt. And then get it back here and getting it installed. And then we'll have one more that eventually we should have rebuilt, so we have a pack up. But that was, uh, two pumps that we had put in, and I don't remember, it was about nineteen ninety-eight, I guess. They're around there is when they were installed originally. So I'm looking to see.
So this is just to have the two pumps that we should have?
Correct. Correct, they were both put at the same time, ninety-eight, one of them quit completely.
What was this one here from two thousand eighteen then?
That's the one, we put a brand new one in, we bought a brand new one, this one here, twenty-five nine fifty-six, so we have the burnt up one, we pulled out, we put a new pump in place of it, so the one that burnt up is the one I sent, and we can either rebuild it for fifteen three ninety-nine, or we'd have to buy a new one for twenty-five. Cause I don't imagine it's gonna be too much longer than that, second pump's probably, I mean, it's war, there's, yeah, it's, there's so much grit that goes through there too, you know? Twenty years, uh, it's, it's quite a long time.
So how successful though, Mike, is it when they rebuild at this stage, if it's that old, twenty-two years old, and we rebuild?
You're basically having the housing, I mean, if you look what's on here, um, and the warranties, he's gonna, he'll hold the same warranty as it would be for a new pump. I mean, it's basically everything, you're gonna rewind the stator, O-ring seals, um, new suction liner, new impeller, the plate on the bottom, the bell flange, new cable, really, the only thing you have is the housing. And they'll, they'll clean it all and paint it, so really, it's, the housing is really the biggest difference between the two of them, and it's, I mean, ten thousand dollars is a lot of money.
It is?
For.
Yeah, but just my question being, is it, is it still worth, you know, nearly sixteen thousand dollars?
To buy a new one versus a rebuild, you mean?
Well, it's ten thousand is the difference.
Yeah, I, I, personally, I think it should be rebuilt, um, cause I mean, your impeller and your liner is really where all, most of the wear is, and then obviously your winding is your motor, but that's gonna be all new. You're basically have your old housing and you're putting all new guts in it, basically.
And the warranty, you said?
He's gonna, it'd be the same warranty, which, um.
That's a new one?
Yes, cause he extended it for me, you know, if it, uh, the nice thing is, these guys are, are, they're from Vermont, but they're close by, they do all our pumps, so if you have an issue with something, they're there to take care of it, it's not like a big company.
Right.
Um, and I did talk to him about it, and I called him, and I said, he might email me, but, um, they would extend a warranty longer than, um, what they say, and a lot of times too, he says if it's gonna sit on the shelf, we'll extend it, because it, it's not in, but in this case, it's gonna be put in.
Okay.
Uh, I think it's one year. Did it say on this one? Um, but that's from the delivery time, that's not from when it's put in. But he, it will be the same warranty, whether he rebuilds it or if we buy a new one, it's gonna be the same warranty. He said he, he would hold that warranty for me.
How does the board feel about it?
I don't have a choice, do I?
Well, rebuild or new, I mean, that's our choice, I, I, I would go with Mike's recommendation.
Absolutely.
I would too.
I mean, and they, like I say, they've been good, if there's issue with something, they've been here to, to take care of it, um. I don't know how long it's gonna take, um. I know when we originally bought the first pump, it was like crazy, like.
Big time was crazy.
Thirty some months, yeah, thirty some weeks, I mean, it was, oh yeah. This company's very hard to deal with, not this company, the company they get the pumps from, and they took like multiple pumps and made ours, they had to build it. Uh, it's, it was a little bit, um. And then that brand new pump we have, they, uh, from the factory, I think they put a bolt that was too short in the impeller, when we first fired it, the impeller came out of it. But it didn't hurt it, they came back and, uh, these guys came back and they fixed it, and he got ahold of them, and they said, oh, wait a minute, put this length bolt in it. When we measured them, I think they put a two, bolt too short from the factory, it was only like two threads holding it. And when we bumped it, when it stopped, the bolt came out, we lost the bolt, but the impeller was just freewheeling in there, but luckily it never hurt the pump.
So, so that's another point I wanna make too, it's ten thousand dollars difference based on two thousand eighteen prices. Uh, did you compare that, did you check for a new price?
No, um, I, I didn't, that was November of eighteen, it's about a year, um, I didn't. I figured, I mean, looking at the difference, I didn't, I didn't have them give me another price of it, what it is right now today. And actually, that price there was actually more than that, and I, I topped them down a little bit on it.
Yeah, most likely more than that.
I'm sure it's more than that.
I think it was twenty-seven something originally, and I, I got it down to.
I, I would make a motion to, to have this pump rebuilt at that cost of just.
So a second?
Seventeen three ninety-nine.
Any other discussion? Local call.
Trustee Patrick, uh, Trustee Malinsky?
Aye.
Trustee Chomley?
Aye.
Trustee Chomley?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich?
Aye.
Is that it, Mike?
Yeah, I guess for today, maybe the next meeting, I'll have some more stuff, I'm sure I will.
How's the feeder bolt doing, by the way?
Uh, the cylinder and stuff's on, working on the, put a new head, cutting that headliner off now, um, but the cylinder's on it. Cylinder and hoses, all that's installed, so.
Good, I bet you could use it.
I gotta get a, yeah, I gotta try to get some paint, same color paint, so that way when he gets it on, he can prime it and paint it. Yeah, it's in, without, um, without fixing that headboard, we'll be in the same bolt, because it's, well, I showed you a picture tonight. Whole thing was rotted, and I showed you a picture, the whole top was rotted right off.
Yeah.
So, um, but that, he's got the cylinder on and, uh, hoses and everything, and it's just the, the headboard now, that one got steel the other day, so. Hopefully, uh, hopefully this week, maybe it'll be.
Be done?
Hopefully, uh, I just gotta get him paint, I talked to him this afternoon, actually, I told him I forgot the call.